Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here, Frausto. Frausto, the action, Bolado.
Here.
Bolado here, Viera.
Here.
Viera here, Rita.
Here.
Rita here, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here, Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Farinwall.
Here.
Farinwall here, Osling.
Yeah.
Osling here, Thompson. Thompson, Emsen, Carr.
Here.
Carr here, Pittmans.
Here.
Pittman here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here, Fulos.
Here.
Fulos here, twelve present.
Thank you much. We move on to number four. Presentation of common proceedings. I need a motion to put the city council meeting to date January eighth, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion, Alvin Bolado? Segment, Slattery. Any questions?
Johnson.
Here, yes.
Johnson hi, Bolado.
Hi, here.
Bolado hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
I abstain.
Rita abstain, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery hi, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi, Levman is in one extension.
Thank you much. As you notice, we're missing our decision lawyer. He is on his way. With the consent of the council, we're going to go to number nine. I need a motion to retire two votes.
I'd like to make a comment, just point privilege first, Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to just, I wanted to do this before public comments, so that's why I'm asking to do it now. I am asking for a special board meeting for Monday night, January twenty-eighth at seven P.M. to do a special independent investigation of the scenario that was in the papers the other, last week. On January seventh, two thousand eight, two thousand nineteen, the aldermen received a packet that their personal residence delivered by Olson and Stir, Kerry Orvath, personally regarding the situation that was in the newspaper about Tahoe's. So we're calling for three aldermen have signed this notice of call, a special board meeting to provide and look into a special investigation or independent investigation, and a special city council meeting called for January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen at seven P.M. in these chambers. And I'll bring this up to the clerk so we can make the official posting.
Well, let me make this, make this comment. I'm away since the city clerk here and mentioned to the media that he had warned the Cook County State Attorney's Office. I'm still waiting to be contacted by them or any investigative body. Be more than happy to give a statement as to what I know. No city funds were used, and I did not buy any bills on behalf of the city. So, again, I think that's where I stand, and I'm still waiting by the authorities to get it handled. You ready?
And I would like to say I did not, from the media, Your Honor.
Well, according to the paper, there was a mention-
There's a letter that I wrote that all the city council members got.
Okay, all right, that's what I was told. So that's where I'm at.
We would still like to call for a special meeting for the independent investigation.
That is fine. I don't know if you're gonna opt the Cook County State Attorney's Office, but that's whatever, you wanna want to control that? Okay, that's fine, no problem. Next, can we go into closed session now? I need a motion? I need a motion to retire?
You don't need to go, he's right there.
Okay. He still wants to go in?
Right, this, this is to discuss the, you- Well, the attorney, Paul Adams is here. Number nine, one, discuss pending litigation in the U versus Blue Island.
Correct.
That's the only purpose of this closed session.
All right. Well, let's wait until- Counsel, do you wanna go into the closed session, since we do have counsel here? Is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay.
Just to make a motion to go into closed session at the beginning of the meeting to discuss, uh, pending new litigation in Lake Way versus Blue Island.
Need a motion? We have a motion by Alden, Letitia Vera, second by Alden Dexter Johnson. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you much, let's go. Need a motion to reconvene to regular session? Need a motion to reconvene to regular session by Alden, Letitia Vera, second by Alden Dexter Johnson. All in favor?
Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson here, Bolado.
Here.
Bolado here, Viera.
Here.
Viera here, Rita.
Here.
Rita here, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here, Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Farinwall.
Here.
Farinwall here, Osling.
Yeah.
Osling here, Carr.
Here.
Carr here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here, Fulos.
Here.
Fulos here, twelve present.
Thank you much.
Members of the council, in closed session, discussed with Paul Adams, the attorney representing the city of Blue Island, the status of the lawsuit in Lake Way versus the city of Blue Island. No final action was taken. Mr. Adams was given certain authority to discuss matters with the trial court.
Thank you much. Now we move on to public comment.
Your Honor, city council members, thanks for giving me opportunity to say a few words here.
If you wanna lift the mic, that's fine. There you go.
The first, what day was it? New Year's morning, like twelve forty in the morning. Like I said, I'm on thirty-four twenty-seven Mozart by Broadway, and that street, Tewa Park, and everything's all filled up because there are a lot of people having parties and so forth. Anyway, I was on my way back to the, my, the lot, I got parking on my back, my property there. All of a sudden, I saw my house, and all of a sudden, I heard automatic weapon fire. And, I'm a combat infantry soldier, Vietnam, I was a small arms specialist, so I know weapons. It's not no firearms. And I was stunned, I go, kinda, I think I go to the ground, and within a couple minutes, I called the Blue Island Police, and they came pretty quick. And I told them, listen, look for shells or something like that, because usually some of these people, they didn't realize where the shells go to, or else, I don't know if they found them or not, but appreciate the city, the Blue Island City Police Department, you know, responding quick, which is, I'm grateful. Secondly, where I live at, there's a problem with parking. At the end of the block, there's a gentleman that's got a business. He has four or five trucks there. He parks on one hundred thirty-fifth street, and I don't think they're, they have city, whatever sticker like that. They're not supposed to park there. And, and there's other people there, got all kind of vehicles parked all over the place. I know the neighbors at the end of the block, Preston Robinson and Hector Garcia, they told me to speak up for them or us.
Mr. Levman, this is one hundred thirty-fifth and one other street?
Mozart.
Mozart.
Yeah. And also, at the entrance there, Mozart and Broadway, a lot of the people in Treda Court are parking in an area over there. For some reason, they don't like to park in their Treda Court area. And that's, that's wrong. I mean, it just, and I don't know if the, 'cause I know one of my neighbors, Jenny Proft, that mentioned, hey, Tom, I don't see no residential parking here as far as signs, so I'm not sure about that. So I was wondering if the city could check into that, see what's going on, and tick, tick of these people, 'cause, no, I'm sorry, these people, they park all kind of different ways, and it's, it's not right, like I said. Like I said, there's, there's gotta be some, some kind of system. And like I said, it's, you know, I've been there, me and my wife have been there, that neighborhood, twenty-two years, I'm kind of the, I guess, neighbor watch, and I tell people, hey, there's something going on, call police, don't hesitate. I say, we're taxpayers, we, we pay tax, and we got the right to, you know, express our views. So thank you very much for listening to my, you know, my little speech.
If you can bring the mic, counsel, then.
I think my voice is not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
This is my second time here. My name is Barbara McClellan, and I'm the resident of Blue Island. My issue was the forty-eight thousand gallons of water I was billed for one month. I have went through steps. I spoke at the last council meeting, and they said, well, I was told there would be an investigation. When I spoke with the city clerk, he brushed me off and sent me to Betty. When I spoke with Betty, she said, this is what the meter read, and pretty much, this is what you have to pay. Then I spoke with your director of finance, Mike. He suggested I call the I team.
What team?
What, uh, insult. The I team. Heaven Investigate-
All channel seven?
Well, I-
Investigative report?
Yes, yes. I felt I was, there was a slap in the face.
Okay.
When I asked him for the report of the investigation, he said, the only report that I will receive would be my bill. And I asked him, I said, excuse me, you mean, I can't get anything in writing? He said, your bill.
Let me ask you this, when was that meeting, or when was that communication that you had?
Last week.
Last week?
Now, I'm new to Blue Island, but I'm not new to this world. And the way I'm being treated is ridiculous. Now, I don't know if I'm in the wrong shade, I'm not part of the social life, or my finances don't meet the criteria. But I will not be bullied, and I want something investigated and something in writing. I will not sit through a meeting again for nothing to be done. This is ridiculous. And when I try to talk to them, each one of them, it's like they just brush me off. We don't have time for this. Pay the bill and move on. Well, I'm not gonna pay the bill.
Just very apologize for that. Maybe we can set up a meeting, is municipal service the one in charge of the water?
Yes.
Maybe we can set up a meeting, as a committee as a whole, and address this lady's issue.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. I hope you have a good day. Your name, your number, okay?
Okay. Can I give it to you now, so I don't have to sit through this whole meeting?
Do you want to give it to Mr. Bushell? Hey, Jim.
Okay, I'll grab it.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Hi, Emily Meyer, twenty-four forty-nine High Street, Blue Island. I was just, wanted to announce that St. Benedict is having their annual open house, Sunday, January twenty-seventh, from eleven until one thirty. That's at twenty-three twenty-four New Street in Blue Island. If you are interested in checking out our school, please feel free to stop by. We would love to see you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Mr. Meyer, what is the time?
From eleven until one thirty.
And that's on the twenty-seventh?
That's on the twenty-seventh, right after Sunday.
Okay.
Which you are all invited to as well.
Anyone else?
Now, let me move on to report of city officials' presentation resolutions, mayor's announcements. Friday, I don't wanna say I had the pleasure, but I was out there at Public Works awaiting the storm, which said it was gonna start at three, and five, six, seven, I think it didn't start until probably eleven that evening. But I didn't go out with the Paul guys, those Public Works guys, until the next morning. From eight o'clock again, to the city council, to the residents of Blue Island, should be extremely, extremely proud of the men and women who work for Public Works. I rode with them shotgun from eight in the morning to six, six-thirty on Saturday, going from north to south. And then, in fact, by Alden Bolado's board, we, we ended there, making sure all the side streets, in fact, your van was parked across the street from your house when we passed. So, we were going back and forth, back and forth. They did exceptionally job. Compared to other municipalities, I think we even outdid Chicago. Just the truck that I was riding in, four to five tons of salt fits in the back of that one truck. We loaded up four times, so make the calculations. With one truck, there was eight single axle heavy-duty trucks, and I think all the aldermen know, we, the city purchased three brand-new Cummins diesels, international harvest trucks, which the men and women of Public Works are exceptionally excited. Right, Jim, about the new trucks? The employees are excited with the trucks.
Thank you.
They're new toys, as they say?
They're our toys.
I know they're our toys, but they did a phenomenal job. I wanna thank you and the crew. They're working tonight. They've worked since Friday, basically non-stop. And kudos to all of you. Congratulations on the job. Well, well done.
Thank you.
City clerk's business.
I have no business, except I got to discuss this notice of call. What is the action taken on this this evening?
There's nothing to be taken. Special meeting for Monday.
Three, three aldermen came to call a special meeting, and then posted a notification of that special meeting in accordance with-
Well, then I'll save my comments.
There's no action required.
I'll save my comments, so let me do, thank you.
Correct. Yeah, for Monday night, for Monday night at seven P.M.
All right, any bits?
I gotta follow up, just to that, just so counsel knows, any and all documentation regarding the Monday night meeting, I will personally deliver to the police department mailboxes. Unless someone wants them delivered to your house, I will deliver to your house by Friday evening, for the Monday club, Monday meeting.
May I get documentation to Alden's?
Yes, wherever your mailbox is at, whenever I get it.
You can email it to me if you'd like.
That's fine.
All right, any bits, city clerk?
No biz.
Uh, city treasurer?
Thank you. Very much, I got the packet, the transfer of strictly non-fund, the forty of six hundred forty thousand, seven forty, seven fifty-four, fifty-nine.
Need a motion?
Motion, please.
Motion, my Alden Osling, second by Alden Bolado. Any question? Broke off.
Johnson.
Uh, no.
Pardon me?
No.
Johnson, no. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery hi, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi, Levman is in one extension.
Thank you much.
The only thing we have, from console, that basically, projections that we did, very conservative, very conservative projections of what money might be coming in from now until the end of February, that basically, payroll will be the first priority, and then services like garbage, insurance, and these certain things will get paid in accounts payable.
Anything else?
That's it.
City attorney?
Yes, there are a number of matters on the agenda this evening. The first is ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash zero-zero-one. An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Orland Fire Protection District and the city of Blue Island for information technology services.
Need a motion? Alden Carr, second Alden here. Any questions? Broke off.
Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson hi, Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery hi, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi, twelve eyes, sir.
Thank you.
The second item is ordinance number twenty-nineteen zero-zero-two, an ordinance rescinding handicap parking restrictions at twenty-four thirty-two Grunwald Street, twenty thirty-three Union Street, and one twenty-eight nineteen Lincoln Street, unit number one, in the city of Blue Island, county of Cook and State of Illinois.
Any motion? Alden Viera, second by Alden Donahue. Any questions?
Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson hi, Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
Yes.
Rita hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery hi, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi, twelve eyes, sir.
Thank you.
Number three is an ordinance number twenty-nineteen zero-zero-three, an ordinance restricting a portion of a certain street for handicap parking only on the south side, excuse me, one hundred third Street, and or near an entrance store for Veterans Memorial Middle School. Within the city of Blue Island, county of Cook and State of Illinois, providing penalties for the violation thereof.
Need a motion by Alden Carr, second by Alden Rita. Any question?
Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson hi, Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery hi, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi, twelve eyes, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, number four is ordinance number twenty-nineteen zero-zero-four, an ordinance ratifying the issuance of five hundred thousand dollar tax anticipation warrants of the city of Blue Island, Illinois. This ordinance was presented by the council for Beverly Bank. They wanted the city council to ratify the ordinance concerning five hundred thousand dollar tax warrants, because the interest rate was reduced from four point six percent to threat three point seven percent, and it will be repaid in, I believe, the April fifteenth, in September, April fifteenth, and September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, installments of real estate taxes.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Farinwall, second Alden Pittman. Any questions?
Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson hi, Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery hi, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi, twelve eyes, sir.
Thank you.
Number five is number ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash zero-zero-five, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special use to allow for used car dealers' use in a general industry, I-2 zoning district in Blue Island, Illinois. Property address is one thirty-eight thirty Harrison Street. The property owner is Steve Barnas.
Need a motion? Motion, Alden Town Hallie, second by Alden Farinwall. Any questions? Broke off. Oh, go ahead, Alden.
Who, what does this mean, interventions and proceedings?
Counsel?
I'm sorry, we're on the, what does what mean? This, the zoning ordinance?
No, interventions and proceedings-
You might have read the other, you might have read six.
Number five.
No, I read number five.
Okay, right.
Number six. Resolution-
No. Especially, especially use to allow for used car dealers' use.
No, 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 resolution, item number six.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Run number five.
I thought that's what he just read?
No, no.
No?
All right, back to number five. You got a motion? You got a second? You got a question?
Just a comment, Chief, that Mr. Steve actually works on ambulances and things of that nature, so he took, just to add a quote to let him know that he would be more than willing to help in any way.
Thank you very much, for that info. You got a motion, you got a second? Any questions? Broke off, please.
Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson hi, Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
Um, hi.
Rita hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery hi, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi, twelve eyes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, number six, resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero-zero-three, a resolution authorizing interventions and proceedings for the state of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois. Alder, what that means by way of intervention, in certain instances, a municipality is permitted to intervene to challenge tax appeals that otherwise will result in a reduction in the amount of real estate taxes owed to the city, or that are taken away from the city's installment because of a successful appeal. So what this does is that, in this particular instance, if I read the memorandum correctly, there's an appeal or appeals pending that could result in, if it's successful, in approximately seventy-three thousand dollars of potential real estate loss. So what this does is it authorizes our law firm, as representative of the city, to intervene to challenge the loss, and at least attempt to reduce the amount that might otherwise be authorized by virtue of the appeal. Does that answer your question?
Is the city attorney, wouldn't you be doing this anyways?
Well, in a situation like this, because it involves litigation, we ask for your authorization to represent the-
We do this a lot at two eighteen, and if it's, there's, property tax appeal board is for, when they're looking for more than a hundred thousand dollars in reduction, then it's gonna be for a board instead of a single person, like or whatever, you know, assessor at the local level. And they wanna see the piece of paper that says that we have, the city has retained, all of a sudden, it's starting to be our property tax appeal board representative.
There's an affidavit which has to be submitted, which indicates that firm is authorized to represent the city in the tax appeal itself.
Alden?
All right, so just to make it clear, in case anybody was wondering, that's a lot of legal jargon. I'm the county township assessor, and one of these properties involved is in Phase Point. Basically, when you do your own property tax appeal at your own personal level, that's not commercial base, you're free to represent yourself as your own, because your own residence, your own house. When it takes it to a commercial level, usually protocol is to hire an attorney to represent the school districts or cities, townships, parks. Any one of the taxing bodies can object to a lowering of the assessed value, 'cause it would affect all of them across the board. Majority of the time, it is school districts, because sixty to seventy percent of your tax bill is your district two eighteen, or one thirty, or one thirty-two, respectively, one forty-two, whatever grade school you guys are in. However, that being said, my experience with these is, if they went through the trouble of hiring their own attorney, and getting the appraisals done, and the property comparisons, likelihood of winning these is very slim, and so the council would have to decide worth the additional cost to chase after seventy-some thousand dollars, which I just wanna clarify, is that seventy-some thousand dollars overall, or just our portion would be seventy-some thousand dollars?
It says in the statement, says, should be the appeal, should the appeal be successful, seventy-two thousand dollar potential real estate tax wise to the city?
The city portion.
That's what's in-
That's a huge reduction, because you get figured, at sixty-seven percent, that's what the school districts are gonna be losing out of this, and I would assume, two eighteen, which covers both of these parcels, would be going after this anyway. So just my opinion as the local assessor, I'm gonna abstain on this motion, because I don't think it's a good reason to spend city money, when we're only ten percent of the tax bill. The school districts are the ones that are gonna be losing out, they don't fight this anyway. In my experience with district two eighteen and one thirty, 'cause I get a copy of the time they fight it, is they usually go after these other ways, protocol, as Mr. House or the clerk just reiterated. So just my opinion is I'm abstaining, because the amount of money that we might chase to get this might not be worth it. And they usually have their ducks in a row to fight this.
Do you have a motion? Need to be able to second?
I'm sorry. Mr. Hoiser, is there, is there an app that you said, I was in a meeting to, for, to do this?
I'm sorry, I-
I'll do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, 'cause I remember you saying something about PTAB or something of that nature.
Oh, that's, property tax appeal board is an acronym.
Right. But, and, and the other thing was that, this is why we strive to try to bring in businesses, new businesses, innovative businesses, in this city, for these type of things, where it brings more value to the home, or to the, or to the city, period. So we need to be more open-minded about bringing business here.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Personal motion, yeah, no.
No, we need a motion and a second. Motion, Alden Farinwall, second by Alden, Dr. Johnson. Any question? Broke off.
Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson hi, Bolado.
Abstain.
Bolado abstain, Viera.
Hi.
Viera hi, Rita.
No.
Rita no, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly hi, Farinwall.
Hi.
Farinwall hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling hi, Carr.
No.
Carr no, Pittman.
No.
Pittman no, Slattery.
No.
Slattery no, Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos hi. Seven i's.
Hi.
Major bird is hi, that's eight i's, and four no's, and one, one extension.
Number seven is resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero zero four. A resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with John Kasperic Company for year-end consulting services for the city of Blue Island.
Need a motion? Need a second? Motion, Alderman Osling, second Alderman Towne Pauling. Any question? Go ahead.
Just want to clarify, I think Director Marcel made some clarification municipal services. So this is for general consulting for this year in Kasperic, correct? We also have in our agreement with Dave Myers for general consulting also, right? So is this redundancy that Myers can't handle? I just don't want to pay two consulting firms with the same work.
This is not redundancy. They are in different areas. One consultant cannot do both jobs because they're the, um...
Confident counsel, I think.
And if that's something that I think the council should think about, whether it's this time or in the near future, again, to make sure the books are good and there's no surprises, you get another accountant, another auditor, just to make sure everything's been cool.
I agree with you there, because I think we need a pair of fresh ayes anyway.
All right, okay.
So as this one, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes, with you.
Do you?
Yes.
Again, any other questions? We'll call.
Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Bilado.
No.
Bilado, no. Vieta.
Aye.
Vieta, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye.
Motion fails.
Next?
I was told that number eight is being removed from the agenda this evening. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. So we move on to number nine?
Number nine. It's a resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, supporting the renewal of a class A real estate tax assessment classification for one twenty-two fifteen South Western Avenue. Aldi, aye.
Okay. Need a motion? Alderman Osling, do we have a second? Alderman, uh, Rita? Any question? Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, I know Aldi is a big game for the city of Blue Island, and they're, it's a beautiful location. But usually when they're reapplying for these, and again, speaking as the assessor, they're going to consent to do additional improvements or additional services, which I know they just completed interior remodel, but that was a part of this particular agreement. Have they agreed to do any consents to us authorizing this exemption?
Let me just go through, uh, Alderman Bilado, it was stated, it was said, uh, stated that, um, they would bring in like nutrition awareness and things of that nature, like school districts and things of that nature.
So they've, they've outlined that in there?
I have not seen it in my concern.
We're going to have them build a second story to that building.
It's a beautiful building.
Seriously. We did, we did. They locate to another location in Blue Island?
Oh, really?
Yes. Secret and better. Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we did, yeah, put discussions about that in the, in the meeting. I think we did recognize the improvement that they just made. It was very significant. You know, I'm not a big fan of these renewals, and, um, I had to be convinced that this was worthwhile. And I do think that it is. They, they really have made a tremendous investment. They hire, they do also employ a lot of people.
Oh, no, I understand. And there's only a few that, that have come across us that actually honor what they've said.
Yeah.
And she brought me another roofing company out of my idea. They're in my ward, and me and Dexter share that, and they haven't done any improvements.
Not that.
Alderman and all Alderman, they're the only large brochure that we have in town. As of right now.
I believe in your effect, they indicated that they spent, recently completed a one point three million dollar expansion.
That's what I was, in question.
Which is what you were representing.
Which is right. Then we look at the total sales tax too that we, uh, that we get from it. But I think that when, when, um, people ask for these things from us, that we need to be, they need to be more community-friendly as well.
We got a motion, we got a second?
We'll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson, aye. Bilado.
Aye.
Bilado, aye. Vieta.
Aye.
Vieta, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye.
How come I voted if it doesn't count anyways?
Aye.
Members of the council, there's, there's another resolution on the agenda at item number ten concerning the agreement between the city and MAP. If you want to go into closed session to discuss it, we can, but if not, I submitted a proposed agreement to you, like this last Friday. Now, do you have any additional questions or just questions you want to pose in the open session when you move forward with that resolution as well?
I can ask them in open session, or I do have questions. I can ask them here or exactly, it doesn't matter.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
You want to jump to that now?
I'll look at my reading, then we can...
All right.
Resolution number twenty nineteen zero zero seven. A resolution approving authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Blue Island and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police for the period January one, twenty eighteen, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Need a motion? Motion, Alderman Fernwald, second Alderman Osling. Questions? Go ahead.
All right. When I begin saying I'm not a police officer or a fireman, I have a lot of respect for both. Some of my best friend's fathers were longtime servers, uh, now deceased at the Blue Island Police Department. So I only one question. I'm sure other council members have other questions. My question is in regard to page twenty-five, section seventeen point two hundred, drug testing. Now, I did not read the previous contract from three, four years ago, but this is very concerning to me as an administrator and a past negotiator of other previous contracts at school district levels. I'm going to read it. Under drug testing, it says if the employee tests positive in any such test, the results shall be sent to the chief with such results kept confidential by the chief. The employee shall thereafter be instructed confidentially to seek assistance. If the same employee tests positive a second time, the test results shall be submitted to the chief for appropriate disciplinary action. Use of drugs as well as being under the influence of alcohol or consumption of alcohol while on duty shall cause for discipline, including discharge. I'm fine with half of it. The original post, the original question I have is, so if you do a random drug test on myself and I test positive for cocaine, for example, or marijuana, or whatever you want to pick out of the multitude of recreational drugs that are out there. If I test positive for cocaine, under this policy, and Mr. Johnson is the chief, he's going to tell me to seek assistance, and then I'm going to go back on the road as a police officer. That same day, that's how this policy reads. And if I shoot somebody, as far as I'm aware, if I shoot somebody, right away they do another drug test, but the chief would have to come say, yeah, we tested positive two hours ago. We're opening ourselves to huge liability here. And I don't know who's in the previous contract, and if it was, it shouldn't be them. You know, it should be a discipliner, it should be desk steward, it could be something. But it says here, it's just between me and the chief. That's it. I can still go out on the street as long as I ask for help. But if I go and shoot somebody, the city of Blue Island here just paid a large lawsuit for something that, um, was a terrible accident, but a lot, not as bad a situation as when our officers test positive for, under the influence of something and then shoot someone. All right? And we're self-insured, where everything comes out of our pocket. So I want that stricken out of the contract or redone or otherwise. I can't of good conscience vote on passing this contract saying that you could be on the street testing positive for drugs.
Alderman, go ahead.
Yes, and, and I got just a question to that as well, because if they undercover for a large, large drug bust and consume that, playing a role, whatever their role may be, is that still constituted as police work or is it drug use?
I can't ask.
Just a question, you know.
I'm asking.
I'm defender, so you can ask. You know, we, I'm, I'm not trying to take no more hits than the city. I'm trying to, trying to do my best to respect the dollars that's being spent.
I can tell you this, that the section that Alderman Bilado just read has not changed in this contract, and the prior contract had been in effect for, I believe, three years, maybe four.
That's why I prefaced it.
And I have no idea how long this particular clause had been in the contract prior to that point in time.
So we don't even know if it was during the previous negotiation or any...
It may have been, it may have been in effect for years. I have no idea at this point.
It just says, I, I, attorney, I really appreciate, I like the residency we asked for. I have no problem with that. I skimmed over this. A lot of this is, is jargon that I'm not comfortable in questioning, because again, I am, I'm not a police officer. However, that stood out as a person that has negotiated contracts, and I've never seen a, a policy that had such open-ended like that. Usually it's desk stewarding, off the street, guard, whatever. You know, you're not on the street with a loaded gun. So that's my concern, and it's a very strong concern from my experience, and just liability.
I don't know what to tell you other than if you're that opposed to it. Is there a motion and a second? If you prefer, uh, tingling this, is that my call?
Do we do the motion? Do we do the motion in a second?
Is it a time?
If you want this, any, I can't just say they're going to agree.
No, he's got to go back to them now. And I would suggest, if anybody else has any question, ask for now, otherwise Attorney Horvath's going to come back and pull his hair.
Ron, Ron Slender?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since I'm in law enforcement, here's my question. Section five point six, overtime work, uh, I'll read for everyone. The chief of police who is designated shall have the right to require overtime work, and officers may not refuse overtime assignments. Any overtime refused may result in either a suspension or dismissal. The first refusal may result in a written reprimand. Second refusal may result in suspension, and the third refusal may result in dismissal. A refusal shall include an officer's failure to answer or within thirty minutes respond to a phone call or text. Um, my question is, what if you're golfing on vacation, you know, for the three-day weekend that we get off or that Blue Island officers get off? What if you're hunting, out, you know, socializing, and you don't answer the phone in thirty minutes? You're automatically going to get written up? That doesn't seem fair. That seems like it's going to cause a lot of terminations and a lot of litigation.
Well, it was agreed to between the union and the city. It was, uh, it's part of a collective bargaining agreement. So if the agreement is followed in accordance with its terms, there's no grievance. There's no litigation. There's no claim either way. The idea was to discourage refusals when the call-out is made.
Well, the question, it's not...
Basically, an agreement between the negotiating teams that...
Well, I'm not saying like a verbal refusal. They're saying that a refusal means not answering the phone. So if you happen to not answer your phone in that thirty minutes because you were, you know, doing something, but you didn't verbally refuse, are you still going to get in trouble?
You have to put something definitive into the collective bargaining agreement. If you leave much to surmise.
Sure.
You end up getting grievances and litigation. The hope is that because it's so explicit and specific, uh, the officers will understand it, management will understand it, and the number of instances where a dispute may arise will be greatly minimized. At least that's what the thought process was when this was negotiated.
I, I, I understand, I understand Slattery's concern, because, but I, I got to say, the other side has agreed to this, so I, I was kind of... You know, except for that to object to this, I would think.
Sure.
The officers agreed to this, right?
Any other questions? Alderman, turn.
First of all, just, um, this was very nicely color-coded, but I don't know what it means.
Well, just so you...
And the question is that...
Well, this is, this is, was, it was intended as a tentative agreement, and so what we did, what was done by the both bargaining teams were, where changes were made. They were other, because of the way the work program works, they either show up in blue. Sometimes a change after the initial change was made was, was highlighted in yellow, and then sometimes changes were then made subsequent to that, which were either bolded in black or stricken. But if it's not stricken, that is part of the agreement. It's underlying, all that means is that it was added at some point in time after the initial draft was made. And if, if you approve it, it would be, it would be reduced to a clean copy so that all of the underlining and stripes would be removed. However, if you don't want to approve it tonight, it's up to you. I mean, I, I, we recommend it as a bargaining team, because as I said to you before, we believe it's been a good agreement for both the police department and its employees and the city. But if you want to hold off on it, I can't make you talk.
Well, that's what we're trying to say, that it's a time period, you know, we have to have it done by Friday or whatever. But, but I think that the question is that Alderman Slattery and Alderman Bilado have, you know, some validity to it, you know, and that we need to, uh, address, address it, but we are pretty busy.
I have to notify the, the, the union, okay, of what the concerns are.
Okay.
Frankly, I don't know what their response will be.
Okay.
But I'll let you know.
Okay.
Alderman, turn.
At, at any time, does Dave Myers have a chance to look at this and determine what the financial impact to the city is going to be? Because...
Did I ask him to look at it? No.
Well, I think it would be important.
Well, then you should probably direct that that be done.
Why? Do I have to make a motion to do that?
Now, we, for one thing, we got the motion pending.
Motion in a second, and of course, we're to bring it to the floor to discuss, so whatever the next motion is, whatever.
They can either vote it down, they can make a motion to table it, or they can...
Counsel?
What you want?
Now we get to complete our motion, vote no, and then ask for another motion, right?
Or you can make a motion to table it, which would take precedence at this point.
Make a motion to table. So motion, the motion, second Alderman Johnson.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bilado.
Aye.
Bilado, aye. Vieta.
Aye.
Vieta, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Osling.
No.
Osling, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye.
That concludes my business. Thank you. That concludes my business, thank you.
Mary, what's your vote?
Yes, Your Honor, the committee met on Wednesday, January 2nd, and was called for at 7:30 PM. Present were Alderman Hawley, Bilado Frosto, Osleen Thompson, absent were Alderman Johnson and Rita. Also present were Howard, Howard Community Development Manager. The minutes from the previous meeting were approved, there's no public comment. We reviewed the invoice and materials from Ingles Investment LLC. Staff included, they paid invoices for the committee members to have an idea on expenses. Alderman Bilado commented about the lighting, the way it was situated on the building, two of the three lights are illuminated in the hanging sign, and the third light is still highlighting the arched window. Alderman Bilado would like staff to look into this further. The general consensus, we're all, we're pleased on how the project turned out. Restaurant to lunch at lunch, update on mural sign, the staff informed the committee that, that his, that Mr. Rodriguez was going to Planning Commission on Thursday for his mural to be reviewed, which is required by the Uptown Transit Oriented Developments. It was mentioned that the mural had changed, the committee concurred with the staff who recommended that they then come back to the committee for approval. The staff was informing Mr. Rodriguez of the committee's request at the upcoming Planning Commission meeting. Under new business, Betty's Place requested extended hours, there was discussion, Mary Beth Connor, the applicant, was not present, but we reviewed the staff's memo, committee, staff informed the committee that Mary Beth Connor removed her two feather flags, but the three temporary banner signs that are attached to the building's wall were still in violation of the zoning sign code. The committee concurred with the staff's observation that the prohibited signs and endorse the idea that they would be willing to extend the hours of operation if she complies with the sign code and removed all non-conforming signs. There was a motion by Alderman Bilado, second by Alderman Thompson, to extend the hours once the prohibited signs were removed, and the motion passed. Building Department Monthly Report update, the committee had no comments. The total revenues for December were $26,477.98, bringing total revenues for 2018 to $584,671.04. That compares to $627,218.1 for 2017, with a decrease in permits accounting for most of the difference. Under Alderman concerns, Alderman Thompson complained about residential property not being properly maintained. Howard said that he would. Alderman Thompson also wanted a list generated by Mark Miller on the exceptions and expiration dates for six, all six Bs and eight As in, in the city. They were, staff promised to contact Mark Miller shortly on this issue. Alderman Osling commented about the status of the old sign near Takeria de Rango Restaurant. The staff said that they would look into the matter, the restaurant is currently expanding in size, however, the old sign would be eventually removed. Alderman Bilado asked about the former store, Dia Rosa Bus Deals, if their incinerator would be removed. Staff replied, they had no knowledge of this matter, but would continue to monitor this establishment and changes in ownership. Alderman Frosto would like to have staff look into a black pickup truck that has been parked in front of them and have pallet for a very long time, staff would look into this matter properly. There being no further business, a motion was made by Alderman Osling, second by Alderman Frosto to adjourn. The vote on, the motion passed, the meeting was adjourned at 8:10. The next meeting of Community Development Committee will be on Tuesday, February 5th at 7:30 PM, or following the next meeting.
Thank you very much. I'm next, please.
I'm next, committee met on January 15th. Members present, Alderman Vera, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Hawley, Alderman Farrenwald, Alderman Osling, absent was Alderman Frosto. Also present was Director Marzelle, Janelle Hunt, Holly Talbot, Helen Stevo, and Val Maffey. Under public comment, Director Marzelle stated the tax rate based anticipation warrant rate started at 4.6, and at closing, it was 3.7. Under the accounts payable for January 23rd, 2019, the amount is $977,701.79. Some of the large invoices are the Whorfens Comp, $38,931.98, Constellation Electric, $22,813.24. Our garbage pickup was $109,944.92. Deconstruction was $339,217.13. This is the Longwood Project, this was a grant. Service date was $29,716.39. And Irapoy Construction was $197,758.56. This was the repaving of Rexford and Irving, and it's coming out of Tiff 5. I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve.
Got a motion, you have a second, Alderman Tom Hawley. Any questions? Have we paid her now? No, no. I don't have any questions.
Johnson.
If not, we take the money back. Well, it's fine. Take the street out.
We have, no, brother.
Go ahead.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bilado?
Aye.
Bilado, aye. Vieta?
Aye.
Vieta, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling?
Aye.
Osling, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos?
Aye.
Kulos, aye. 12, 9, 11.
The next item on the agenda is the payroll for January 11th, 2019, in the amount of $350,928.45. I need a motion and a second to approve.
Got a motion, second by Alderman Vera. Any questions?
Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Bilado?
Aye.
Bilado, aye. Vieta?
Aye.
Vieta, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling?
Aye.
Osling, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos?
Aye.
Kulos, aye. 12, 9, 11.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, 11, I'm sorry, thank you. 11 and 1.
Okay, under discussion, the committee again discussed the EMS reporting software license agreement for ambulance calls. Also discussed Mark Miller explaining the property tax appeal board on two properties. No further business, our meeting was adjourned at 7:45. Next meeting is February 5th, 2019, 7 o'clock, East Danex.
Thank you very much. Alderman, take a second.
I don't have minutes, we didn't have a meeting back in December. There were annual reports mailed out to all Alderman, to hold the plates on the fire department. I think I'll refrain from reading them, we'd be here all night, so you can read them at your leisure. Our next meeting is February the 12th at 6 o'clock, here in East Danex.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
We just had our meeting, we have our next meeting is Tuesday, February 19th at 6 PM in the East Danex. Also Municipal Services Committee, it says Department Annual Report. I was not given any information on that. Do you have a report that is to be given?
No. The only thing, just as a reminder, just make sure that young lady is on the agenda for that next meeting.
Yeah.
Anything else? Judiciary Committee?
The Judiciary Committee did not meet in January, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 19th at 6 PM in East Danex.
Thank you very much. Any aldermen, any aunts, or cousins? Oh, that's just some direction.
I would like to say thank you to Jim Postrel and Public Works, you guys did a great job with the snow removal. And continue, it's storm 27. And also, I would like to reiterate that we need all the aldermen to come Monday night at 7 PM here in the East Danex for this special meeting to, for, to hire an independent investigator.
Thank you very much. Alderman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to echo on what Alderman Rita said and thank Jim Postrel, Public Works, Water Department, did a great job, well done. I know they were all working very hard the last couple nights, so thank you.
Jim, since you're on your topic, what is the update for tonight?
We're supposed to get this rain off, but the ground temperature is really cold, and that's why it's freezing and making ice, even though the temperature's going up overnight. We're supposed to have an end to it by noon tomorrow, I believe.
From my understanding, we're expecting some more snow?
The snow's not really an issue, for right now, for this one, the snow's not really an issue. It's in the forecast, but will minor. But we're solving our means and the fact rate for this point.
Okay, alright. Anybody else? Alderman, go ahead.
Members of the council, I would like to go into closed session to get some direction on what you want us to do with MAP, and I would ask that the deputy chief and chief of police be allowed to come in as well.
This one, got a motion? You have a motion? Alderman Vera, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye.
Let me see, conversant with you. GK. Oh, I thought you was talking to someone. You know, I could take you about an hour here. I have the same contract.
So you're like, bucks?
It's a different contract.